I'd like to welcome everyone to the Clarkston Independence District Library Board of Trustees Meeting for June 13th, 1922. We're calling the meeting to order at 6:35 and will rise for the Clegg of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us call roll.
Jan Daphne Edson, Dan Green.
Here.
Alison McBethan-Huslin.
Here.
Nancy Moon.
Here.
Mary Ann Palmera.
Here.
Dan Rose.
Here.
Chris Shell.
Here.
Leonard.
Okay, I will accept a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions or comments? In that case, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Call to the public. We have a member of the public.
Oh, yes. Good evening. Well, the cement for the kaleidoscope will be laid and we hope to have the kaleidoscope in place by July 20th, and that is a joint venture between the Clarkston Community Women's Club, which has disbanded and gave us the rest of their money, which made the kaleidoscope possible for the most part, and the Friends did kick in some money and the Garden Club will be planting around the kaleidoscope. And the other, well, there's a scarf skip, scarf sale project that we're working with to try to get beautiful scarves ready for our December boutique. And Julie passed out an operating agreement between the Friends and the library. It's a very specific legal document that says the library board is responsible for all governmental decisions and the Friends are a 501(c)(3) that raises money on behalf of the library. The website, the content is ours, but we do get some technical support from library staff.
Excellent. Thank you. And I think we do owe a debt of gratitude to the Women's Club who had the foresight to inaugurate a library in our community. So we're very pleased that this is, we will be able to commemorate them, the Friends, and the Garden Club who made this lovely area. Thank you. Okay, we have a sizable consent agenda tonight. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
All standard.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Are there any questions about any one of those items? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Okay, library statistics, the colorful part.
So in terms of statistics, we are seeing the patterns sort of return that we were seeing pre-COVID from 2019. May tends to be a little bit slower than April. People are kind of finishing up their school year and it will get busy in June, July, and August. So everything is a little bit lower in May than it was in April. Circulations were down just a smidge, down to 19,678, but downloads were up. So people were still logging in and downloading books and audiobooks and such. The children's programming was up and the computer users were holding very steady as well, so. Not drops that are significant necessarily, but it is always a little bit slower in May.
Okay, any questions or comments? If not, we will move to the library director's report.
During the weeks of May 16 through the 27th, the library hosted field trips for students in grades K through 2 from all of the elementary schools. Children heard a presentation about the upcoming summer reading program and had a tour of the library. This was a collaborative effort of the staff choreographed by Molly Weiner, our school outreach coordinator. The visits went very well. Then in the weeks following the field trips, the youth staff visited each elementary to do presentations for students in grade 3 through 5 about the library's upcoming summer reading program. So we couldn't get everybody here by bus, but we did get K through 2 here and then we reached out to them, so that was a nice collaborative project. On Friday, May 27th, the library staff completed the transition from the EVANES online calendar software we were using to the Local Hop calendar system. The program is now live on the library's website. The new software interfaces more easily with our website, allowing us to feature upcoming programs and events. It also streamlined the process of the public reserving meeting rooms by allowing them to make the requests online and confirm the reservation via email instead of having to make the reservation via phone only during library hours. As with any software transition, we're still working out a few details, but the upgrade went well and the launch was fairly smooth and the features of the new software have improved service, so we're looking to do that project. As Laura mentioned, on Friday, June 10th, the concrete pad was poured for the garden kaleidoscope project that is being placed in the island approaching the library's main entrance. The concrete will need to cure for about a week, then the artist will be able to install the piece. The installation is tentatively planned for the week of June 20th. This project is truly a collaboration as it is being funded by the Women's Club and the Friends of the Library. The Garden Club will be doing the planting and the curing of the flowers and the plaque that will be added to the piece will recognize this collaborative support that the library has been so fortunate to have. It will say honoring the Clarkston Community Women's Club for having the vision to create our library, the Friends of the Library for their continuing support, and the Clarkston Farming Garden Club for making it beautiful. We are on target to have this project complete in time for the Garden Club's garden walk on Wednesday, July 20th. Given everything else that has had delays during COVID, this one is moving really fast, so that's a good thing. We received notification from Library Design Associates that work on our various projects will begin the last week of July. The carpet and paint in the community meeting room and teen lounge will be done first. The furniture in the meeting room will also be delivered that week. The meeting room will be complete by the end of July, so it will be ready in time for the room being used as a precinct number four for the township. The furniture for the teen lounge and the book nook are expected to ship on August 5th and we anticipate that all four projects will be complete by mid-August. Any questions on any of that?
Yeah, are we, are we going to be able to meet in here for the July meeting?
Yes. Yep. They're going to execute it in about four days, but it's the very last week of July, so yeah, we'll still be in town. So July meeting, it will look like this, then the August meeting, it will.
Be new.
Be new. It'll be all new, yeah. Due to this pandemic, the library was unable to provide our usual annual all-staff training days in 2020 and 2021. Early this year, we funded a series of 13 webinars requiring each staff member to choose one and allowing them to take up to three. This was a workable solution to make up for missed training in 2021 that allowed staff to select topics they were interested in, but everyone is ready to discuss a more traditional in-person training day for later weeks. The department heads have begun a conversation about when we would like to do this and what topics to select. We are considering a fall training, perhaps October, and will bring a proposed closure date for the training to the board's staff. And then in terms of collaborations, in collaboration with the Independence County Fire Department, the library now has a new AED, Automated External Defibrillator. The library has had a unit in the lobby for several years and was first included in this project when we were a township department. In the same way, the schools are included in this effort while not being directly part of the township, the library is also still included, so that the units throughout the community are the same. The library staff receives training and certification through the fire department. These trainings could not happen during COVID, so staff who needed to renew their certifications could not do so and new staff could not receive the training. Fortunately, we are now able to begin scheduling those trainings again and will do that as quickly as we can. The first few staff members were trained last week, myself included. Using funds provided by the Friends of the Library, our information services librarian has developed an all-ages program featuring games. To expand this project, additional funds have been provided by the Friends to create a circulating board game collection. Patrons will be able to check out board games to play in the library or to take home. Recognizing the difficulty of circulating items with so many pieces, the staff researched the way to monitor that everything is returned. This is being done by weighing each game and labeling it with the amount it should weigh when everything is included in the box. At check-in, if the box is underweight, a staff member can then do a piece-by-piece inventory and contact the patron for the items that are missing. The collection will be launched soon and will be housed on shelving next to the self-checkout station that faces the youth department.
That sounds like a good suggestion.
When he said he wanted to check out games and I, my eyes went, oh my. We're going to weigh it and if it's underweight at all, they're going to put a very exact weight on the box and if it's underweight at all, then somebody on staff has to do a complete inventory of everything in the box. If it weighs spot on, then you can just get checked out.
And keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Because it's so easy to find it under the chair, wherever.
Well, I'm sure we'll have a collection of backup dice and that sort of thing, so.
All right, moving to regular business, let us talk about the 2021 audit.
Yes. Okay, so I believe you all have a physical copy of the audit report, Cravon?
We do.
Yes, we do, they each have one of their papers.
Okay. I don't believe I gave it last year, but the presentation should be pretty similar to the prior year. Essentially, what I'm going to do is go through the opinion, the financial statements, and then any larger changes between 2020 and 2021 and answer any questions throughout any event if either of you, any of you have any. So if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me. I have no issue being interrupted. So if we go to the first page, it's a few pages in, it's called the Independent Audit Report. At the top of it, there is the opinion paragraphs. The second one is our opinion on the financial statements, so I'll just read it to you guys. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the library as of December 31st, 2021. What this means is it's a, the library received an unmodified opinion or the clean, a clean opinion, it's the best opinion the library can get, so there's nothing better you guys could have done to receive a better opinion. So when I submitted to the state, that's the one they want and so that's what you received. So in essence, you guys pass the audit, so kudos to all of you. If we go down a few more pages to page four, this is the management discussion and analysis section of the audit report and it kind of just goes over the financial highlights. And so I'll just go over each one and really the financial highlights, bullet points. Just a caveat, the first two bullet points are on a somewhat different basis than the second two bullet points. The second two bullet points are on the fund level, which is what Julie and anybody else who shares financial information with you, that's, that's the basis of the finance, the basis that they present to you. So it's on the fund level, it doesn't include your fixed assets. If you had long-term debt, it wouldn't include that. Any long-term items, it doesn't include. The top two bullet points do include all of that, so there's going to be some variation between the two. And if you have questions, we can look at the financial statements and it should be somewhat easier to figure out the differences. So on the first one, the long-term basis, the assets of the library exceeded its liabilities and deferred inflows by almost 4 million, a little bit under 4,309, which has shown us net position, meaning you have excess assets over any liabilities or stuff you have to pay out. Of that amount, 2.3 million of it is unrestricted, meaning it can be used for anything you guys need, there's no restrictions on it, it can be used for anything. So a sizable amount of unrestricted net position. Second bullet point, during the year, the library received 2.25 million dollars in revenues and incurred a little bit over 2 million in expenses, so you increased net position. You had excess revenues over expenses of $236,000, a little bit over that. Third bullet point on the fund level, so it doesn't include any long-term items. Your general fund increased its fund balance by $372,000, a little bit over that, so now you have an ending balance of $2,329,000. So pretty sizable fund balance. If we go down to the last bullet point, unassigned fund balance, meaning it's fund balance that can be used for anything, there's no restrictions on it, management didn't assign it for anything. You have 465, almost 466,000 dollars of unassigned fund balance, which equates to a little bit under 25% of your general fund expenditures. So you have a lot of assigned fund balance, I do know that and I can show you that. But if, for whatever, using unassigned funds, you would survive about a quarter of the year if you received no income for a year. And that's only at unassigned fund balance, you have a fair amount of other fund balance as well. So if we go down to page six, this is your statement of net position on the long-term basis, it shows your assets, liabilities, and your net position or equity. You can see that under the current asset section does include your capital assets, so there's, that's where the variance is between the fund level and the long-term basis. Long-term does include these, fund level does not include these. There weren't giant changes that I saw throughout the year. You did have a fair amount of increasing cash, your cash increased about $331,000 approximately. This is mainly due to you guys just having excess revenues over expenses, so if you have more revenues and you spend less, then you inherently get more cash. So that's the main reason for that. And then you do, from other governments, increased about $100,000, which is mainly tax revenues that haven't come in yet, so you're waiting to receive those. So that's the reason for that increase. There wasn't anything giant that switched between the prior and current year, other than that, everything was pretty similar. If you have any questions over what you're looking at, feel free to ask. If not, we can move on to the next page, page seven. This is your statement of changes in net position, it shows your revenues and expenses for the year, so you can see that your property taxes were the main source of revenue, which is same as every year. You've increased about $100,000 in property taxes due to an increase in taxable value, mainly. And then you had about a $50,000, yeah, about $60,000 in increase in expenses from 1.95 to million to 2.01 million approximately, so. Increase in revenue, but similar increase in expenses and you can see that you had it still an increase in your net position, meaning that you had excess revenues over expenses. If we go down a few more pages to page 13, this is your fund level financial statement, so it shows your general fund and this is where the fund balance comes into place. So you can see all of your assets, your cash, your receivables, and your prepays. If we go down to the bottom, you can see that you were now showing 1.8 million dollars in assigned fund balance, which Julie and I talked about it and she is saying essentially that we're allocating 1.8 million dollars of cash, kind of, to be used for future building maintenance or capital projects or something along those lines. So if somebody looking at the financial statements saw you had a large amount of fund balance, they can now see that a lot, a lot of it is being used for, or being allocated for something other than just general library operations, if that makes sense. So it provides a little bit more specification to what the library is using its funds for, for whoever is reading this. And if we go down two more pages to page 15, this is your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, so it, it's on the fund level and it provides a little bit more detail to what your revenues and expenditures are for the year, so you can see, made most of the money through property taxes and all of your various expenses and you can see that ultimately you increased fund balance by $372,000. So. Any questions on any of that?
No, that's in line with what we have been discussing.
Okay, good. That's everything I had, there wasn't anything else that jumped out to me that the board or anybody at the meeting should know, so. Anything else I can answer for you guys?
Any questions?
No surprises, really.
No?
Well, I'm glad to hear there aren't any surprises, it's nice to see that people know about their finances, so happy to hear you go.
We thank you very much, we consider this a very important part of our governance, so.
Right.
Thank you for your assistance in that matter.
Right, and everything has been uploaded to the state, so from an audit perspective, you guys are totally filed and there's nothing else you guys have to do.
Okay.
You're off the hook, that was very easy, Ian, thank you so much.
Okay, well, if there aren't any questions, I will head out, I guarantee you guys continue with your meeting.
Thanks so much, Ian.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Bye, Ian.
That was hitting the highlights nicely.
I was hitting the highlights nicely, yes. The next presentation sort of elaborates on some of, oh, no, I have it in the alphabet order, sorry.
Do we want to do the Clarkston Historic District?
Yes, we can do that first, that's fine.
Next, number two.
Yep.
So much work for the audit, presented in such a brief.
Oh, yeah, it was very clear, it was great.
He's good at that, we like him.
I can see why.
Better than, better than a surprise.
Yes.
Can everyone hear me okay or do I need the microphone?
We can hear you.
You can hear me fine, don't worry. All right, so the next, I'm going to leave my mask off, so it'll be a little easier for I'm far enough away from everybody, I'd like to make sure that everyone can hear me. So you may remember that about a year ago, we did the Clarkston Historic District webpage upgrade. And that was something that had been created back in the early 90s, it was Bill and Sue Basinger who created that site and we wanted to rescue all of that content. It was actually still in raw HTML form and we needed to upgrade it, and so we created a database. And you may remember when I did that presentation, there was a lot of flexibility built into it that would allow for us to be able to expand upon that site. So tonight, I'm going to show you some of the expansion that we've done since then. So if you go to the About page on our website and you go down to Clarkston Historic District, so this site probably looks familiar to you from when we did our, our tour of that site about a year ago. The part that, you'll remember, we had divided it into sections, we had a section for visitors, a section for youth, in-depth for researchers, and then also for a section for homeowners and homebuyers where we could upload additional information for them. So the part that was very bare at the time was the youth section and that was sort of my, my vision, that we would have something on the site that would be kid-friendly. And some, some of the researchers thought that that maybe was not as needed, but second graders have in their curriculum local history and they do a tour every year where they walk through downtown and they learn about the history of the community and this was pretty heavy stuff for them, but it didn't mean the information wasn't important. And so we were very blessed to find Molly Weiner, who's our new school outreach coordinator, and she and Bill Bowman worked very, very closely with the schools, including the second grade teachers, and they developed a downtown Clarkston Historic Walk, which is a kid-friendly walk and it is essentially the curriculum that they created for their second graders and we translated it into a walking tour on our website, which means it's available to all the kids in the community, not just the kids that are going to Clarkston schools in the second grade. So this is actually a little bit like, like the interactive directory or the Interactive Historic District directory where you can kind of click wherever. What they did was they have particular spots that they stop at along the way and we turned it into a walking tour. So if you begin at the very, very beginning and you start at Frank's Store, you can see that there is a photo and there's information that is kid-friendly, second grade level, and then the kids are actually going on this tour and they can take their Chromebooks or their iPads or their mom's cellphone or whatever and they can, they can read this little bit of information and then they click and they go to the next location on the tour.
Wow, that's pretty cool.
Which is South Holcomb Street and there's a little bit of information there and they can work their way through the walking tour step by step. This one talks a little bit about the Mill Pond Dam. A little bit more about the dam and they can, as they walk along, they're getting, they're getting it a little bit, but you can see, it's just a little snippets of information, kid-friendly, not too difficult, but definitely at a level for them and curriculum, directly coordinated to their curriculum, so that whatever little worksheets or whatever little assignments they are doing, those questions are being answered by this walking tour. So this was sort of the vision when we created this, that I kept saying, I see this thing where little kids will be able to use the website as well and Molly and Bill and the lovely team at the school were able to, to make that dream a reality, so we're very excited. It will continue to be built upon, as you may have noticed on that first page of the youth page, it's just a basic introduction and then down here at the bottom is that tour. You can see we have plenty of room to build out and do some additional things on this site if we decide we want to do something that's specifically for a high school class or something along those lines, people have the ability to do that.
That's an excellent collaboration.
Yeah.
That's very good.
That's wonderful.
We're very, very excited about that. It's the launch of summer reading, so Molly will be doing this presentation to the, for the staff later this summer, she was not available this evening, so I'm bragging on her project on her behalf, but it was really she and Bill and the team at the school that participated.
Where do you find it on the website or how do you get to it?
So from our website, if you go to the About tab, you can see where it says Clarkston Historic District way down here at the bottom, that's right-clicked on it and there is the site.
Thank you.
Yep. I did breeze over that really quickly, I just kind of put this there, but I should have put a little more, a little more, put a little more attention on how to find it. Any questions about that?
Great, thank you. I mean, people don't have to wade through everything to find the area of their interest, that's good.
And the students used this on the tour that they did just a few weeks ago when they were downtown.
We saw them.
Little kids walking downtown, this is what they were using in order to conduct that tour, so that was, we were really excited to be part of that.
So now we will move to a review of the capital improvement plan. Everyone has a copy.
I have a copy of that sitting in front of you. Okay, so this segues from the audit report, I just wanted to take a few minutes to go over this. We do, we do this every year and when Ian was talking about the, the money that went into fund balance at the end of 2021, remember 2021 was still a bumpy year for us in terms of being able to get projects done. We, we turned over a fair amount of staff, there were times when we were short-staffed where we had had full-timers who had accepted other jobs and we were in the hiring process and so some of the money that went into fund balance was because of that, we were in a hiring process. And so there were a number of months when we were not fully staffed. Some of the other money that went into fund balance was because of projects that we were not able to execute. So the meeting room was one of the projects that was on that agenda and the teen lounge remodeled was something that was on that agenda that did not get, that got done at that time. We had talked about a generator last year, also didn't get done, that's on the agenda this year. So that money that sort of went into fund balance is being pulled back out and put back into the budget this year in order to execute those projects that were not able to be done last year, things that would have been in the budget. The other thing that we're keeping in mind, he talked about that money, the unassigned versus the assigned fund balance, so the unassigned is that sort of money you have in check that should something happen that we are not able to fund the library, that that would be the money that we would be living up of for some period of time. But the piece that is assigned, that big chunk, that is money that for my mind is for capital improvements, for potential upgrades to the building, perhaps an expansion of the building, but. but definitely for the maintenance of the building. So the thing I want the public to remember, and obviously the board already knows this, the building was built... Well, originally, if you go far enough back, it was originally built in 1969, which is the footprint of the children's department. In 1992, we added a 16,000-square-foot addition onto a 4,000-square-foot library, making it the 20,000-square-foot building that you see today. That was 1992. As of this year, that was 30 years ago. So as you can imagine, things do age, just like they do at home. The problem is 20,000 square feet is a lot of square feet, and it is a commercial building. So projects that need to be done are pretty pricey. And we do these projects, and the time just flies. So the first thing that I have on here that I want to point out that many of you already remember is we did our redo of the parking lot, which seems like it was just yesterday. It was 2015, 2016, and 2017. So the concrete and asphalt that's out there is already five to seven years old. And it has... Now, it has an estimated life on it over approximately 15 years, and that's what this particular spreadsheet shows us. Now, we were very lucky. The previous parking lot, we got nearly 25 years out of it. I would like to hope that that would happen again. But over the course of three years, the re-asphalt and reconcrete work at that parking lot cost a half a million dollars. So this is the reason that there is this chunk of money set aside. When we do these big projects, they're not cheap. And we need to be prepared for those. Okay. So I'm not anticipating it's coming up all that quickly, but what I do is the facilities coordinator, Arlene and I, go through this every year, and we assess how old things are. How long is that expected life? What is the year that it was most recently installed or replaced or upgraded in some way? What is its current age? And what is its replacement priority? We have not gone through the replacement priorities for the upcoming year. We're still sort of adding in the things that are being done in 2022. But I'm going to scroll down a little bit. I've got some notes here. That was the first one I wanted to show you. The next one that I'm going to show you that I'd like to talk about briefly, not nearly as expensive, but still important, it would be the irrigation system. The irrigation system is about the top third of the second page. Some of it has had some work done to it in 2015 and 2016. It has an expected life of about 15 years. Most of it we had for 30. Some of it is six or seven years old. Some of it was reviewed and upgraded during the parking lot project, but not all of it. The actual control panel was replaced in 2015, so that's in good shape. And obviously, we replace pads and pipe when we need to. But it is something to keep in mind that that's an ongoing process.
Well, if it's 30 years old, why does it have a two priority issue?
Well, because we've been able to do some upgrades and because it's a less expensive project and a lot of the replacements... He's not going to dig up the whole thing and redo it all anymore. So as a priority two, we're doing it sort of in a...
Phase?
In an as-needed basis. Some aspects of it take more of a... Or some areas that would take more of a beating than others. All of the sprinkler heads that are along the driveways, those have been replaced many times as they get hit by the snow problem. Some of the areas that are more in the middle of the islands, those are a little more worrisome because they don't get touched as often. Obviously, heat winterizes and preps it every winter and spring. But we do keep an eye on that when it's a priority two because I'm not going to run out and say, hey, Mark, we need to replace the whole system. But I do keep a close eye on it, and that's what makes it a priority two.
I see our favorite fire suppression.
Our favorite fire suppression. I can't not... I just can't have a meeting where we don't talk about fire control. It's a building full of paper, so that's an important thing that we talk about. It is originally 1992. I couldn't list all of the work we've had done on this particular system. Supposedly, if you look at capital improvement, information for commercial buildings, it says it should last 15 to 20 years and is 30 years old. No company is going to come in and completely replace it. So essentially, where you are with fire suppression is replacing it a pipe at a time. And we've replaced quite a few pipes in the last few years. The thing that we have been focusing on the last year or so is the monitoring of that system. And so a year ago, Memorial Day, you may remember that we had the system armed. And when the system arms, we have to bring in technicians to drain it. And we don't like to do that because it's expensive to drain the system. So what we have done is added a monitoring system to it that lets us know... We have one that lets us know when the pressure drops. But if it drops too low, a physical alarm, an auditory alarm goes off in the building, which is fine, as long as we're here. But if we're not here, which is what happened last by year ago on Memorial Day, it continues to deflate, and it eventually arms. So now we have a system or a new monitor that we had put under the system that goes through the alarm system. And so if it does drop low, not only do we get called, but so does the fire department. It buys us the time to get somebody in here to shut the system down before it arms and before we have that expensive issue. In the process of working on some of that, we also now know, well, we knew, but we hadn't really addressed it up until this point. Our fire alarm system was up to code in 1992, but there are a lot of ADA, American Disabilities Act, features that have been put into code for fire alarm systems that we do not have, which is Arlene and I have spent the last several months sort of researching the best way to transition the system. That is probably a $30,000 to $40,000 project. And it is an important one because it is a building full of paper. We need our staff and our public to be safe. And in the building, we need the collections to be protected. But how do you transition a project that large? Because of course, if you start doing these alarms all over the building, you really can create a situation where you are upending the day-to-day operations of the building. So as part of this whole research on how to deal with the fire suppression system and monitoring, we have been working with these various companies. So the first thing we did was pull out that project, and we talked to the companies about how they would execute... Because they were all pretty close. We had five companies. We eliminated the highest and the lowest, but three in the middle were very close. So we started asking them about how they would transition us strategically for a project this size. We need to switch to a new monitoring company, which is item four on the agenda tonight, and we'll be talking about that a little bit more. The company that we would like to start monitoring the system is the company that we believe and will be recommending for the actual changeover of the system when we are ready to do that. But they are also the ones that we felt were the most qualified to do the monitoring, and that comes from working with the fire marshal and the fire inspector on making a good choice for a building. But as I said, fire suppression is not a board meeting if I don't talk to you about fire suppression. See what happens when you let me read the library book of FireAction.LA that was... Should not have read that book. That was wonderful, but I shouldn't have read it. Okay. So the next page, page three. I want to talk a little bit about roof. Because of course, roof... Librarians are like cats. We hate water. And keeping the water out of the building is really important, and that starts with the roof. So the flat rubber roof... So the top of the building is flat, and it has a rubber roof that the township replaced in 2013 as a party gift when we separated from them. They felt like they would gift us with a roof, which was very, very nice. It's time to remember that that was already nine years ago. And that flat rubber roof has an estimated life on it of 15 to 20 years. We are taking very good care of it. I anticipate we're going to get more time out of it than that. But just so the board is aware, that was a $90,000 project. So you can see why I'm setting aside money to handle some of these big-ticket items. Okay. So the shingle roofing. You see the flat rubber roof, and there's shingles on our roof because it looks like we have a standard roof with the shingles all going around that are kind of sloped. That was done in 2005. They were 20- to 30-year shingles. They already have 17 years on them. But our facilities coordinator has been doing a really good job of keeping an eye on that, and we have had some areas where there has been some storm damage in that, and she is right on top of those, and we've had somebody come in, and we've been maintaining that. So I suspect we're going to get more than that 20 years. I don't know that we'll get 30 years out of them since we have had some damage to them. But that's another project that we...
We have three years to think about it, Tom.
We do. Well, we're going to start thinking about, you know, making sure that we've got a timeline for that. Okay. So windows. I wanted to talk a little bit about windows. The windows are obviously 30 years old, and they have a 20- to 30-year life expectancy on them. Interestingly, the issue where we had the accident in my office gave us an opportunity to talk to a window company because they came in and assisted us with those windows. And what I now know about our windows is that while they are 30 years old, they are good quality windows. And he felt that, when it came right down to it, even with the accident, they repaired those windows. We did not have to replace those windows. That whole project is coming in under budget because the windows were not as detrimentally damaged as we had feared they might be. But the thing that he said is that he thought that we should probably address soon, maybe next year or the year after, is potentially having somebody come in and just recaulk everything and reseal it all. But he felt that the windows were in good shape, that we did not need to be talking to a company about total window replacements, like you might in your house to repaint them. Which is good because they're all custom-made. That was one of those things I was trying not to think too hard about because of course, it would be very... Okay. We are up to page four. So on page four, I wanted to talk a little bit about restrooms. Restrooms are another... As anyone else who's had a bathroom done in their own home, restrooms are a big-ticket item. So the partitions and sort of the plumbing and the mechanics and everything in the bathroom, all those are original to the building. And the children's department, the two little bathrooms in the children's department are actually original to the previous building, the 1969 building. We did replace the toilet in one of those restrooms, so it's more recent. But the other one is still a 1969 toilet, and it is still doing fine. We do a good job with our facility moving company, maintaining our plumbing. It has been pointed out to us that while our restrooms are technically ADA up to code, they are somewhat challenging if you are in a wheelchair. And so the facilities coordinator and I have been talking about different ways we might address that in the future. We have a couple of ideas in mind. I don't want to tip my hand too much, but there's some ideas about how potentially we could revamp the restrooms that are in the children's department. There's two very small restrooms in the children's department that perhaps we could turn that into one larger restroom that would be like a family restroom that would more easily accommodate a wheelchair, that would more easily accommodate... One of them has a diaper-changing table, the other one had a toddler seat. So some things that would allow one restroom to sort of cover all those bases.
Which is better for a family that has toddlers and is...
Absolutely. Right now, those bathrooms, while they have the ability to do that, they're a little small. So... But that's kind of what we've been thinking about the possibility. And so that's one of those big-ticket items that we're trying to set aside money for the possibility of doing that in the future. So we do know that the Meeting Room is being redone. And that, interestingly, people said to me, oh, but it looks like it's in such good shape. And it is. Really, those stacking chairs that we have in the room have a life of approximately 10 years, and we've gotten 30 years out of our stacking chairs. As they deteriorate, we do discard the ones. They're not really repairable, but we do discard them as they become a problem. And the tables have held up really well, but unfortunately, they are challenging because they don't have wheels. They don't have any way to move them easily.
Heavy.
They're challenging for... And they're very heavy for our custodial staff. And so that is part of the reason that we are redoing the furniture in this room is to make it safer for the staff to move things around and make it easier for the public as well when they're renting this room to be able to do that safely so we don't have to worry about workers' complaints or issues with pigments potentially injuring themselves trying to rear in your furniture. So that's a project that will be done at the end of July, so we're very excited about that. And that is something that was, as I said, budgeted for 2021, did not get done in 2021, but the board made a budget adjustment to move money from fund balance in order to pay for that project in 2022. So last year's budget was put in... Back into the budget in order to pay for that project. Okay. HVAC. We're on page five. We're in the home stretch. Thanks for sticking with me. We're almost there, Tom. HVAC has a life of about 15 to 20 years on it. That was one of the very first capital improvement projects I did when I was here. We were still a township department at the time. It was done in 2006. 16 years on those units. At the time, in 2006, that was a $60,000 project. There are five units on the roof, just so that you're aware. So you can see why I'm looking at this capital money and saying, this is a sign. This is money we are setting aside for these big-ticket items so that we are not going back to the taxpayers and saying, wow, now we need to do this. Wow, now we need to do that. No. We are setting aside money specifically understanding that the building is 30 years old, and we have big-ticket items that are coming up, and a bunch of them coming up pretty quickly. So. Parking lot lighting. Now, some of you will remember that we did do the walkway lighting that's up near the building, the shorter lighting, back in 2016, and that is LED lighting, and we absolutely love it. We would like to do at some point something similar at the tops of the tall poles in the parking lots. We didn't want to do that at that time because we wanted to test it, make sure we liked it first. They... At the time, they really... The company that was helping us do that lighting project really would have loved us to do the whole thing all at once. Yeah. But that was a lot of money. It was about a $40,000 project just to do the parking lot lighting. Since then, we are seeing that there are some options Since then, there, we are seeing that there are some options of the way that they're doing lighting. You would not necessarily have to do the entire poles. So much of what they're doing in terms of parking lot lighting are caps at the top. So I'm glad we waited because it gave us more time to research some other options. I don't have that one given, given a specific timeline yet, but that's another project that we have in the works that we're thinking about. The generator, we have talked about that. That is something that I would still like to do in 2022. We have not made a fund balance adjustment in order to put that back into the budget. Because I wanted to get these other four projects done, I'm glad I waited because they are taking longer than I would have liked, thanks to shipping delays and that sort of thing. But it is still my intention to try and get that done, or at least start it before the end of the year. Recession lighting are the little can lights that are all over the building. Those we've been sort of replacing on an as-needed basis. The fluorescent tube lighting, when the tubes that were in the original lighting were discontinued. The federal government put out grants so that governmental organizations and businesses could swap out their lighting. We were part of a grant through the Independence Township Department of Public Works, and all of our tube lighting was redone at that time. And they'd had a 20-year life on it, and we're already 12 years out from that. So we may be looking at the possibility of needing to do some lighting upgrades at some point. They are fluorescent. LED would be, I think, to do, but that's, as I said, there's a lot of, lot of projects that we could tackle that we're going to have to just kind of pick and choose in time accordingly. Okay, any questions about any of that? I just wanted to make sure that it was clear when he said that great big number, that there's a reason for it, and there is a reason that it is listed as being a sign. Plus, the board has also talked about the possibility of a future expansion of the building at some point, and that is all things that we would be taking into consideration with that money that is set aside. That is money that is essentially being set aside for the care and maintenance of the physical property.
Very clear. Thank you.
Yeah.
I can see we're going to have to do some priorities with you and Arlene.
Yes, it sounds like a lot of money until you start looking at the big list. And the list is something that we developed when we were still a township department, and I give Bart Clark a lot of credit for that. He's the one that helped me put this together back at that time, and we have been continuing to maintain it. And it's been, been really nice to be able to pull it out every year and say, okay, what do we really need to work on? How do we prioritize these things? We can't do everything all at once, and we don't want it to be one of those things where we choose what to do just because it's a thing that comes up in the moment.
Good plan.
Yeah.
Thank you. That was very clear. So as part of that plan, we need to review the fire alarm monitoring contract.
So recap that a little bit. The facilities coordinator and myself have been working with the Independence Township Fire Marshal and Fire Inspector on future upgrades to the library's fire alarm system. This has included updates to the fire suppression system, such as the alarm on the pressure monitor, that will also notify our alarm monitoring company instead of just an auditory alarm in the building. This needed to be connected into the library's current alarm system. During the complicated process of researching companies to provide the needed alarm system upgrades, we also assessed the current alarm monitoring service and found it lacking. In addition to comparing the price quotes of these companies, we also assessed the strategy they would use to help us transition from our outdated system installed in 1992 to a new system that would be up to the current code. With the assistance of our local fire officials, we have determined that we would like to begin this process by transitioning our system monitoring to IQ Life Safety Systems, Inc. While this monitoring cost is slightly higher than what we are currently paying, the contract actually includes the annual inspection on the fire alarm system, which our current service does not. We pay this cost separately to a different company. Taking this into consideration, the new cost is comparable, and the fire inspector feels that having the same company do both the monitoring and the inspection is a better choice. In terms of service, the backup of the new system is done with radio frequency. Our current system uses cellular backup, which has been going down frequently. IQ's radio frequency system is being used in local businesses, and the fire officials report that it is working well. We are proposing to set up the equipment so that IQ can take over the monitoring, then canceling the service and making the switch over. So the first thing everybody's going to ask is, what about the current system, company monitoring system? The current monitoring service is not under contract, so the service can be canceled at any time without penalty. And in terms of funding, alarm monitoring is budgeted. A refund for the remainder of the year would be provided by the current company upon cancellation of the service, and that can go toward the new service. So essentially, from a budgetary standpoint, it's kind of a wash. The amount of money that we would be paying for the inspection is rolled into this monitoring, and that's the part that looks confusing because if you compare apples to apples, it does look like it's more, but there is an inspection cost in there that was not included in that. So. Any questions about any of that? I know it's a lot of tiny prints, I'm sorry.
If I understood this correctly, we pay them a fee for the year, but then if they actually have to come back to the building, we have an additional cost.
At this point, this has to do with the actual monitoring of the system. They don't own our alarm system. We actually own our alarm system. And so, the point at which we would change out the alarm system, so the point at which I come to the board and say, okay, let's spend $40,000 and put in all new lights and sirens, and we're talking about the ones that if there is a fire in the building, alert the public to get out. The point at which we would hire them in to do that, we would potentially look at a different thing that would include parts and labor. It didn't make sense for them or for us to put it in here, for them to support the equipment with a plan like that, because we know that most likely we will be approaching a company to come in and change all of that out. So we wanted to go kind of a minimum, and that's the kind of system, or the kind of plan we currently have with our monitoring company.
So that's why we chose the bronze.
That's why we chose the bronze, yep. The point at which we have a brand-new system that was installed by the company, we might want to go with the silver or the gold potentially, but in this particular situation...
This is part of the transition.
It's part of the transition, yeah. Thank you. That's a good way of putting it.
And so we have it for five years, and their incremental additional cost is falling, it's less than 9%, you know, not more than 9%.
Yep.
But the other thing I found interesting is here on the second page, it said repairing the service within 36 hours.
What number is that?
Number 10.
Number 10 repair service.
Am I the only one who read this word for word?
Probably.
I read it word for word, but I read it last week. I didn't know the words in this. Okay, okay. Yep, I read it last week. So what is your concern about the...
Well, it just seemed like 36 hours, you know, seemed like a long time.
Well, so in that particular situation, the reason they say within 36 hours is because they're allowing us to determine whether or not we want to pay the up-charge for a weekend.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
You know how everything happens Friday night?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Whatever goes down, that's what it does it.
So when they say within 36 hours, if they were to say they would do it within 24 hours, then they would not be allowing themselves to have that up-charge. They up-charge, they pay their employees more for coming in over the weekend. They're not going to contract and say, yeah, we'll do it within 24 hours for the cost that we always do. Yeah. So they say within 36 hours because what they're saying is, they will, we will call them and they will say, do you want me to come now? Even though it's 11 o'clock on Friday night? Or would you like me to come on Monday morning? This is what we charge.
Okay.
So that has to do with that.
And so the communication system would be installed in, that seemed pretty reasonable, only $1,200.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And we brought in our IT managers to help us kind of go over the equipment and understand how it was supposed to work. And essentially, it's a, the radio frequencies talk from, they have radio frequency signals throughout the community because there are other businesses, which is why it would work here and why the fire inspector and the fire marshal felt it might work really well for us, because there are a number of businesses in the area that are already using it, and because there are businesses that are using it, it transmits faster.
Okay.
And this company is located in Waterford.
Oh, that's close.
Yeah, it's close.
I like the idea that the fire marshal has been an integral part of helping us work through this.
Even though we are not a township department, they take the library very, very seriously. They take the protection of the collection and the public and the staff very, very seriously. It is a building full of paper. And when they come in and say, you need to do this in order to keep the building and the people safe, we do what they tell them, do what they tell us to do. So we have an excellent relationship with both the police department and the fire department. Despite the fact that we're not a township department, I feel like they just, they baby us a little bit, which is nice.
Nice.
Yeah, they do.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I think it's a pretty comprehensive agreement, so personally, I'd rather word for word.
Yes. We had to come in and read it. This was too long to read online.
I picked my stuff up on Saturday so I could read it.
Yeah, and that's why I printed it out. When I printed it originally, it defaulted to eight-and-a-half by 11 paper, and it came off the printer. I thought, okay, nobody can read this. Then I realized it was a legal paper, and when I printed it again, it came off as this.
Well, we've been discussing this now for several years, and we have all seen the issues that we've been facing. Wetsohs have been on the roof, and we've been looking in the ceilings and so forth, so it's good that there's a plan.
Yeah.
An incremental plan.
Yes, there is an incremental plan. This also, well, I didn't mention it in the capital improvement plan, but this is the first step in also dealing with the security alarm system. The security alarm system is a little less complicated because we basically have perimeter alarms and some, some of the some blast break alarms, but the fire is more important and a building full of paper at this stage because monitoring the library, we're not a high-risk target necessarily. We're certainly not a casino or something along those lines where people would want to break in for that kind of thing. But that will also have to be leaked in because this will also monitor that system.
Good. That's great.
Okay. If there are no more questions, I'll accept the motion.
I make a motion that we approve the alarm monitoring agreement with IQ Safety Systems as presented and authorize the library director to sign the contract.
Second?
I'll second.
Chris, second? Did she beat you to it? It's been moved and seconded that we approve the alarm monitoring agreement with IQ Safety Systems as presented and authorize Julie as library director to sign the contract. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Do we have a timeline, a timeline for this?
I will probably, this is actually an electronic document, so I can docu-sign tomorrow, and they said that within two to three days, they would have, give us a date when they would come in and do the install. I called and they already had all the equipment and stuff, so I would say that we would probably be doing a switch over next week even.
That would be terrific.
Yeah. So right away, which is nice because the current monitoring system is not monitoring that brand-new monitor we just put on, so.
So it's part of piece, part of parcel.
It is, it is.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I will accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. We are adjourned at 7:35. Nice timing, everyone.